Twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I am Mayor Nathan Box. I'm calling this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd Vreeman.
Here.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you Kathy. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Hookstra, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would ask that you join us if you're so inclined.
Let's pray. God, we know you by different names. We engage with you through different traditions, but we are glad that you meet each of us where we are with a love that goes beyond understanding. We ask that as we gather here tonight to conduct the business of the city that you would guide us, inform us, inspire us, and let us exude and practice those things that are so important to you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Dave. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine, and they've been reviewed by council members as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the general public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on its regular order on the regular agenda. But before we ask that Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, April twelve, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. For C, oath of office. For D, written petitions and communications. Tax abatement PA one ninety-eight coastal container, twelve oh-one industrial AV. For E, Holland Board of Public Works capital budget amendment for information technology work. For F, Holland Board of Public Works Ottawa County drain easement. For G, Holland Board of Public Works declaration of surplus material. For H, Holland Board of Public Works Beechwood lift station rehabilitation. For I, Holland Board of Public Works Holland Energy Park CO and COX catalysts. For J, Holland Board of Public Works lease of a portion of the forty-nine West Third Street Building to Magna Services of Holland. For K, Holland Board of Public Works appointment of special counsel to assist with power supply transactions. For L, planning commission, three eight seven West Seventeenth rezoning request, final adoption, May three, twenty twenty-three. For M, city clerk claims filed against the city. For N, city clerk annual license renewal, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For O, transportation services, Sixth Street snowmelt improvement, special assessment, adopt resolution to schedule public hearing of necessity for May three, twenty twenty-three. For P, community neighborhood services, scheduling of a public hearing, CDBG program, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, annual action plan, May three, twenty twenty-three. For Q, public safety services, approval of lease agreement with Grand Valley State University. For R, management administrative services, revocable license agreement, S eight, West Eighth Street front balconies.
Thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Coronado.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And Kathy, would you please note for the record that Councilmember Corbin has joined us? Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity in all of our city meetings for our boards, committees, and commissions and council for the public to have the opportunity to address council. This is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to be able to speak to council about any matter that you would like to. We do not answer questions during this time or engage in discussion, but it's an opportunity for you to express what you think is important. We do limit your time to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means that you're doing well on time. The yellow light means, excuse me, that you have just one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. When you approach the podium, please state your name and the municipality in which you live, and each person may only speak one time. Is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Martha Capastani, and I'm from Holland, and good evening council, and I want to thank you for your service. I'm here tonight as a representative of April Faith Month. The theme scripture for our events has been John twelve thirty-two, where Jesus said, "If I be lifted up, I will draw all people to myself." And we have tried to have our events in public spaces whenever possible. We have also encouraged the Hispanic community of faith, who is a vital part of Holland and surrounding areas, to be involved in these events, and we believe our faith includes every tribe and tongue, and we are one in Christ. So council, last week you received the April Faith Month flyer events planned throughout the month, and I would like to highlight those that are left, and we encouragingly invite you and the community to these events. On April twentieth, the Kane Band will be at Ridge Point Community Church. April twenty-three, Kevin McIntosh will be speaking on Toxic Division at Providence Church. April twenty-fourth, Dr. Albertus Van Ralty will be at the Herick Public Library, and of course, April thirtieth, Faith Month gathering at Centennial Park. Now throughout the month, our events have been chalk on the sidewalks for children and families. We've been prayer walking our neighborhoods, praying for neighbors and our schools. And of course, on May fourth, the culmination of everything is the National Day of Prayer Breakfast at the Civic Center, and the deadline for tickets is today, and you can contact the twenty twenty-three Greater Holland Zeeland Mayor's Prayer Committee. Now I'd like to introduce a few special guests that will be speaking later. We have Pastor Jose Duran, Movement West Michigan and South America, and he will be praying for you as directed in First Timothy, chapter two, verse one through three, where it says, "First of all, I urge that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all those in authority, so that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity." And there may be others that wish to come forward to pray for you as well. And then next we'll have Pastor Austin Krutz, who travels and speaks before governments in Lansing and in Washington concerning our constitutional rights and freedoms for all mankind, and he will make clear the intention of the separation of church and state and the misconceptions held by governments and even church leaderships. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Araceli Zuniga, and I'm thankful to be here in front of you, and it is, and my sister-in-law, Sherry.
And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Sherry Garcia, Holland.
Okay, thank you.
So she will be translating a little bit in Spanish of what, you know, I'm going to share, but I'm, like I said, I'm thankful that I'm here tonight. And I am the person in charge to. Representative of April Faith Month. To announce it to the Hispanic public. Hispanic pastors. And so that's why we have come here. Also to lift up prayers for you. Because we need to include God in everything we do. And I see the prayer, thank you for the prayers that you continue to lift up in this place. So this says, how faith, now faith is the substance. Of things hoped for. The evidence of things not seen. Hebrews eleven one. And so this is my prayer. And I say, Father. We come before you today. Thanking you for our salvation. That is found in Jesus Christ. The forgiveness of our sins. We have so much to be thankful for. As a community. Of faith. The freedom we have found. In you. And how your word says. He whom the Son sets free. Os libertare, yeah, is free indeed. John eight thirty-six. Thank you, Father. That there was an April Faith Month. Proclamation. Passed through Congress. In Washington DC. And how we now continue. To celebrate Jesus. In our communities. In our streets. In our neighborhoods. Letting people know. He is the hope of our future. Generations. His love. Transforms us. More and more. To his image. Thank you for the leaders. Here today. And for Mayor Nathan Box. El Alcalde. That serve this community. Of Holland, Michigan. We pray for wisdom. To govern. To govern. The time you have. They have here. That we can truly always say. In God we trust. As we continue to do the work. Each one of us. Is called by God. In Jesus's name. We pray. So, you know, we appreciate you guys. And we hope you make it to National Day of Prayer. Hosted by the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Gracias, Patrocinado, thank you so much for doing this, and I don't know how much time I have, but like I said, you know, we're grateful for our freedom. That we have here to continue to express Jesus wherever we go. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time?
Yes, sir. Good to see you, man.
Yes, and would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Jose Duran, that's my name, and you want to say your name?
Joshua Vanderklaas.
Yeah.
I'm the leader of the group for Latin America.
Pastor Duran, could you state your municipality as well, please?
Holland, Michigan.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, okay.
And Joshua, my pastor here in Holland as well.
Thank you.
For me, it is an honor to be here before you guys. Because we have been praying for each of you. We believe you have a huge responsibility over your shoulders. And this is what I'm doing around the world in the Latin community. Taking government, church, and business leaders together for their community. Ah, para diminuir la pobreza y el crimen. To lower poverty and crime. And raise employment to improve. My brother arrives just recently from Venezuela. He said, "This city is so beautiful." We have such a beautiful city here in Michigan. And so we're going to keep it beautiful. Spiritually. And socially. ¿Qué le parece esta idea? ¿How do you like that idea? Es una buena idea. It's a good idea. Sí, yo creo que es una buena idea, necesitamos trabajar juntos para eso. I believe it's a great idea, and we need to work together. Y ver la manera cómo podemos aprender el uno del otro. En humildad. Porque eso es importante, que aprendamos el uno del otro en humildad. Me permiten orar por ustedes? Voy a orar por ustedes, si pueden cerrarse un momentito? Padre, en el nombre de Jesús. Oramos señor para que tu presencia sea sobre cada uno de ellos señor. Comenzando con el alcalde. Que tú le llenas de tu sabiduría. Con tu presencia Dios. Y que cada uno de ellos señor sepa que ellos están representándote a ti papá. Señor, oramos por tu Espíritu Santo sobre ellos Dios. Y que tú señor les puedes hablar a cada uno de ellos señor. Tus pensamientos señor, y que venga tu reino sobre Holland, Michigan Dios. Señor, oramos Dios, que tu Espíritu Santo traiga nuestra convicción señor, trae convicción en nuestro corazón para arrepentirnos de nuestros pecados y acercarnos a tu presencia. Oramos por tu santidad señor sobre Holland. Oramos señor para que podamos ayudarnos el uno al otro. En humildad. Para gloria tuya Dios. Te pedimos perdón. Por los pecados. De los líderes de la ciudad. Y de esta ciudad. Perdona los pecados de esta ciudad. Y purifícanos Dios. Que venga tu reino de paz, seguridad, y gozo aquí en esta ciudad. Señor, para gloria tuya papá. Y gracias por tu gran amor por nosotros. Y muchas gracias por tu presencia. Así los bendecimos a ellos papá. En el nombre del Padre. Del Hijo. Y del Espíritu Santo. Y todos decimos. Amén.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Raoul Garcia, and I'm from Holland, Ottawa County. And first of all, I want to thank, you know, you guys and all of you that are part of the membership. I was kind of thinking whether should I speak Spanish or do it bilingual? I don't want to mess up, you know, so I just want to do it in English, if that's all right. And my family is here, my wife and my niece and my granddaughter. And we're pastoring a church also. It's called Centro de Amor, Fe y Esperanza. And we've been here approximately about thirty years, I want to say, over thirty years. And my son Raoul, you know, he was a part of the council back a couple of years, maybe back, or something like that. And we, you know, I would tell him, you know, you know, we're praying for the whole council. Let them know at our church, we have prayer group, you know, prayer meetings during the week, and we praying for everyone, every one of, you know, and that's what I've learned. Coming from Texas, we prayed for our governors over there in Texas and our leadership, because it's very important to pray for, even God calls us to pray for the leaders. So it is, we know as Pastor Duran, Jose Duran was saying, your job is very important and challenging, you know. My son told me a little bit about it, you know, how situations sometimes you come across and stuff that you've got, and you need wisdom, and the true wisdom comes from God. The true wisdom comes from God. Knowledge, you receive it anywhere, school, college, wherever, but true knowledge comes from God, the fear of God. So it's very important to, you know, and I just want to let you know that we are here in this city till whenever God leads us to be here, and too bad my son, I don't know if I should say that, but he's going to move out of the state and out to another state and somewhere in Colorado anyway, but I told him, well, make sure you do what is right, and he's, you know, those people that know him, they always tell me, you have a great son, you know. And so I'm very excited about what God is going to do to, in our city, which is going to have to stay humble and see God with all of our hearts. That's what I wanted to share with you, and I just want to say a prayer. Can you help me out and let's pray and, yeah, come on, come on with me, okay? Let's pray, this is my, this little girl, she's a prayer warrior, I'll tell you, even in school. And you know, I want to tell you, you know what, she got in trouble by praying in school. Yes.
Please address the council and speak into the microphone. Otherwise, people at home can't hear you.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. So, you know, she got in trouble in school by praying for a little girl that fell. She was a, she had an owie, she said, and so she prayed for her, and she got a little, like, you ain't supposed to do that. That kind of touched me, you know, I said, what? And so, you know, I said, you know what, you just do what God is telling you in your heart to do, and I encourage her, and, you know, she is a little girl that loves God with all her heart, and I just want to, for them to help me pray, let's pray for all these people here, okay? For the mayor and for all his, you know, help, these, all these people, they help them, and they help decide, you know, things for our city. So let's pray for them, is that all right? Okay, let's pray. Father God, we thank you. We thank you for being who you are. Thank you for being the God that you are. You are a God, a God of mercy, Lord, and a God of peace, a God of joy. And Father, we just pray right now for our mayor here, Father, and for every, everyone in the leadership in this town, in this city. Lord, we know that you love this city. This is your city, Lord. We have given it to you back a few years back, Lord, when March for Jesus was at hand, and we acted, and we marched for you, Father, that this city belongs to you. And Father, we just give you praise. We ask for your kingdom come to this city and to our mayor, Father, and every one, Father, that is in the board, Father, the city council, and all the ones, Father, the team here, Father, with the mayor, Father, we just ask, Father, for your guidance and your peace, and Father, we just thank you for everything that you're doing and what you're going to do, Father. You have the future of this city in your hands. We put this future in your hands, Lord.
Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, your time has expired. And please give our best to your son and our brother Raoul.
I will.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson Zeeland. We so appreciate all who came here tonight for the Mayor's Declaration of April Faith Month. The grace of God has been seen in every event we have planned. We are inspired to look forward to next year. New faith relationships have been made with willingness for others to know God. As I navigated this month, we have seen something that has developed in Holland, which I would like the council and the public to realize. It is now accepted, and it is clearly anti-faith. Anti-faith dangerously has become a forceful right, even a civil right. It is undermining exclusion, it is undermining exclusion and devaluing our constitutional religious place in this city. In reality, the practice is ignoring these freedoms, labeling them as ineffective. Even worse, they need to be eliminated. Here's the evidence of the mindset. Herick Library would not comply or respect the Mayor's Declaration of April Faith Month by putting up a display of faith books at the entrance. They do celebrate other months. The Civic Center would not display the National Day of Prayer posters on their windows to advertise for the event because the city of Holland does not endorse it. Hope College would not acknowledge April Faith Month except cautiously inviting the public to a Catholic and Protestant worship services, which they offer all year long. Evergreen Commons would not allow our Faith Month event flyer to be put on the, out on the counter for members. The Holland Visitor Bureau said their purpose was to publicize events only that visitors would be interested in. Some churches did not respond to the invitation for the April Faith Month event. Was it because of their mindset of separation of church and state? The Benice Foundation Against Suicide was not interested because faith could possibly mean religious or Jesus. They service DEI public and charter schools, plus the Boys and Girls Club. The atmosphere is evident in the city of Holland government as well. Good morning. I have received your application for the use of Holland Park on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Regretfully, policy states that no religious organization can be used in the band shelf. You are more than welcome to use the green space in front of the band shelf or elsewhere in the park, but we will be unable to approve your application for the use of the band shelf. Please let me know how you would like to move forward. Thank you, Department Assistant, Holland City. The pastor inquired of the director of the department, and he said it is policy that any use of the band shelf had to be endorsed by the city. There was never, that was never advised by the assistant to the applicant. The woman who applied was upset because the denial never guided her to reach out to someone in the city government for endorsement. For April Faith Month, I asked the Department of Streets and Sidewalks if the children had permission to draw their faith on the sidewalks. The assistant said no, because the separation of church and state. This would not be allowed because it is religious. The director of the department said that we could if the chalk was environmentally safe. I told him about the separation of state comment. He did not reply. Did he know about the United States Supreme Court's ruling of the lemon test being nullified twenty twenty-two, which gives us religious right to express our freedom of speech? May I ask the council to review what the city attorney said last year, assuring us the DEI ordinance protected our religious freedoms? Perhaps the city department policies should be advised to make sure there are equal opportunities offered to all mentioned in the ordinance. The DEI should be renamed anti-discrimination. DEI now denotes exclusion and elimination of our religious rights, anti-faith. I heard something on the radio, God is love, anti-God is hate.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is William Hurley, and I live in Glenview, Illinois. I'm here to set the stage for the following presentation on the separation of church and state and how its confused interpretation here in this community and government has brought into question the hindering of our religious expression. You may remember in twenty twenty-two, a six-three decision of the US Supreme Court that quote upheld the right of a football coach, Joe Kennedy, to take the knee in quiet prayer after football games, even if seen by students and the public. According to the US Supreme Court opinion, quote, "Respect for religious expressions is indispensable to life in a free and diverse republic, whether those expressions take place in a sanctuary or on a field, and whether they manifest through the spoken word or a bowed head." Here, a government entity sought to punish an individual for engaging in a brief, quiet, personal religious observance, doubly protected by the free exercise and free expression clauses of the First Amendment. And the only meaningful justification the government offered for its reprisal rested on a mistaken view that it had the duty to ferret out and suppress religious that it had the duty to ferret out and suppress religious observances, even as it allows comparable secular speech. The Constitution neither mandates nor tolerates that kind of discrimination, end quote. Because of this case, the Supreme Court affirmed free speech to include the expression of one's religious beliefs. Therefore, exercise and expression are equated in our religious freedoms. This brought the court's attention to, um, another incorrect precedent, the Lemon Test. Quote, "The Lemon Test, named after a U.S. Supreme Court decision, Lemon v. Kurtzman, which made it too easy for people to claim they are quote-unquote offended by a religious display, then sue and win in court." This test caused many schools, school administrators to mistakenly believe that they had an obligation to suppress religious observances, often leading them to violate the rights of teachers and students. In twenty-twenty-two, the Coach Kennedy case had the U.S. Supreme Court overturned the Lemon v. Kurtzman decision that restricted exercise and the free expression of faith. The court's opinion in this case is this, quote, "This court long ago abandoned Lemon and its endorsement, uh, test offshoot. In place of Lemon and the endorsement test, this court has instructed, uh, that the establishment clause must be interpreted by, quote, 'reference to historical practices and understandings.'" With this being understood, the following presentation will reflect our current situation in Holland, uh, that bring into question some of our practices in the community and government with regard to the free expression of faith. Should the government of Holland take this to heart, policies and ordinances should be corrected to accommodate the religious exercise and expression of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Uh, my name is Austin Kreutz, my municipality is Allegan City One. I'm the president of the Banha for Reform for Church and Culture. And I thank you for the opportunity and, uh, Mayor Brooks, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Now, I'm gonna maybe take a different tack than what you think, uh, I might be taking because I'm not taking it from just a Christian stance. And we're talking about the separation of church and state. What we're talking about is something that has some historical significance, but it also has the application for all religions, not just Christian religion. And that includes, by the way, secular humanism, which the Supreme Court has deemed as a actual religion. In other words, atheism, all the way down and all the way up, Islam, as well as Jews, as well as Christians of the diversity that we have in the Christian faith. Now, if you were in Massachusetts pre-revolution, in order to vote, you would have to be a member of a congregational church, own property and be a confessing and also a commun- a communicant in that congregation in order to have the opportunity to vote, let alone hold office. Now, when the Constitution was put together and ratified in seventeen-eighty-nine, the problem that they had is that these states that were like, uh, Pennsylvania with the Quakers, Massachusetts with the, uh, Congregationalists, Maryland with the Catholics and on and on it goes. The founders had this idea of freedom of speech and we do know from what we have in what we call the Bill of Rights, particularly the First Amendment, that we have a freedom of speech, but we also have this thing in there where it says, "Shall not establish a religion." Now, why was that in there? Most of our founding fathers, matter of fact, a lot of them were from the Church of England, which is the Episcopal Church. And when it came to a situation of our basic rights, the right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, what began to take place is that in order to have a better union, it was decided that the freedom of speech would allow religious expression in the marketplace that everyone would have, A, an opportunity to hear each of the religious stances of the day. Again, everything from Judaism on down, okay? And with that, what took place in eighteen-oh-two is the Danbury Baptist asked President Jefferson, "Can we not have an established church, a government-established church in our nation?" Now, you have to understand something. The Bible, the first American Bible was published by the United States government through the Constitution, not the Congress of the United States. So our government provided what the majority at that time was asking for, an opportunity for copies of the scripture and they were given. However, also other religious organizations had the freedom to express their particular point of view in the marketplace. And this is, this is where I feel that as a council, you have to understand something. If you're gonna eliminate all religious expression, it's not just Christians you're talking about. And by the way, it's not just non-believers you're talking about, you're talking about atheists. You're talking about those that worship, uh, Baha'i, Baha'u'llah. The whole spectrum of religious concepts and ideas, which is the freedom that we have in this nation to express concepts and ideas in a religious context. I would urge you to not just put aside Christianity, but I would urge you to be open enough to allow all religious expression, including atheism, and there is an atheist movement here in this city, to be able to freely express. If you deny Christians the opportunity to speak, you must deny HOSA the opportunity, oh, I should say, you must deny HOSA the opportunity to use the library as they have. And having pastored here in the eighties, I know that the atmosphere in this community has changed drastically. But if you say that they cannot use Herick Library, then you must tell HOSA that they must not use Herick Library. And so I urge council to consider the fact that what we're looking at is an opportunity for religious expression in this community.
I'm sorry, sir, that your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Gladly. Jim Story from the Allegan County portion of the city of Holland with my county commission report. Uh, earlier this week, our Allegan County Mental Health Agency with the working name of On Point held a ribbon-cutting for our repurposed service building. It allows all operations of On Point to be housed in one building instead of two separate facilities. Uh, by converting a former big box store, significant savings were achieved. About half the cost to taxpayers of building a new, uh, building on a greenfield site. This continues our Allegan County model of first considering structurally sound vacated buildings for needed services rather than building new. We are awaiting the decision of the state's high-speed internet office on the endorsed grant application of broadband provider one-two-three net for our application to help fund the installation of high-speed access to our county's twelve thousand unserved or underserved residents. If the grant application is approved, it will join, uh, the county's commitment of seventeen-point-seven million dollars in federal ARPA funds that are matched dollar by dol- dollar by dollar by one-two-three net itself. Um, and securing future electric supplies has also been a focus in other areas. Working with, uh, Holtech International, who has the support of the governor and others, we are encouraging the revamping and restart of the Palisades Plant, uh, near South Haven. Uh, applications for approval of this are before the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and, uh, Secretary of Energy, uh, Jennifer Granholm. We are also working with my colleagues in other counties, uh, across the middle part of the lower peninsula to ensure that thirteen hydroelectric dams, including the Coaken Street Dam, um, in Valley and Allegan Townships in our county, are not abandoned by consumers' energy. Going back to Holtech, one of their, uh, senior officers, the president, estimates that Michigan has about a one-thousand megawatt daily deficit. In other words, thousand megawatts need to be imported into the state daily. So securing our electric future, which the city has done, um, is, you know, a big statewide issue. And finally, tomorrow, I will be attending the annual Grant Me Hope, uh, gathering at the Well Managed Civic Center Place as the guest of homeless advocate Helen Zirra of our county, who is working to establish a shelter within our county. And, uh, we have some initial groundwork, but a lot, long way to go on that. And I cannot, uh, be here today without acknowledging and thanking Councilman Peters and Councilman Hookstra for their service. I know that they have, uh, indicated they will be ending at the end of this year. I've worked with both of them personally on behalf of this city. And only those of us who seek these local elected officials, offices, understand the sacrifice that goes in with them. And I salute you and thank you both, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Wendy Loss, I'm from Holland, Michigan. And I just wanted to say, after hearing, uh, several of the other speakers, that I have enjoyed being a part of the activities of Faith Month that the group has planned. And I just want to encourage you to wholeheartedly endorse it for the future, for like next year, because I think faith, um, building faith in Holland is good for Holland, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is item seven-A, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone for three-seventeen Central Avenue. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems like for council, and those may be the following, we've been doing a lot of these neighborhood enterprise zone steps. Uh, tonight, uh, council, what you don't have in front of you is anything for you to specifically take action on. Uh, the process is laid out where this evening, you are just holding the duly noticed public hearing regarding consideration of the establishment of an NEZ, um, as outlined in the presentation. And that you really hold the hearing tonight, you hear if there's any feedback. And then, um, at a later date, you would be able to, um, ultimately take action on establishing the zone or not. I do know that there was some question about, and I just think it's helpful to make sure that everyone understands, this is a over, a neighborhood enterprise zone for a development purpose. It has nothing to do with what I'll call more traditional zoning or changing, um, like the traditional neighborhood development zone or mixed-use zone. Even though neighborhood enterprise zone is in the name, it has nothing to do with what I'll call traditional zoning. We do have, um, a representative of, of the, um, entity that's eventually interested in an application for this. That could answer any questions if you have. But again, um, the item before you tonight is just to hold a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Any questions that, uh, council may have for the applicant? Want to make sure we get that opportunity. All right. Uh, I will now open a public hearing in regard to, uh, a neighborhood enterprise zone at three-seventeen Central Avenue. If there's anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item, uh, the guidelines are exactly the same or the rules are exactly the same, you have five minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, next item on our agenda, uh, in addition to doing, uh, in-person public comment, we also have the opportunity for people to be able to send us email comments. Uh, we collect those in between our, uh, regularly scheduled meetings, uh, council reviews them and then we accept them into the record during our regular meetings. We don't read them into the record, but we do, uh, accept them in. Uh, and the email address that you can use, if you're not able to, uh, or it's inconvenient for you to be able to come into, uh, a city council meeting in person, you can email us at publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Once again, that's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Uh, we do not have any of those this evening, but we want to make sure that people are aware that that opportunity is out there for them. Next item on the agenda, item twelve-B-one, text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, number eight, uh, for final adoption on May three of twenty-twenty-three, Mr. Van Beek.
Steve, you've been here eight times already, right?
That's right.
Welcome back and, uh, please lead us through this set of recommendations from the planning commission.
Great, thanks, Keith. So yes, this is round eight of your Udo amendments. And first off, I guess the same message I gave the planning commission, I do want to thank you for your patience with this. I know the adoption of Udo was a lengthy process and we've sort of been working through these refinements as well. And we're really hoping that this round eight will really kind of wrap up these, these, uh, frequent amendments. So certainly don't expect that you won't be amending our ordinance again, but these kind of frequent corrections and, and things are really coming to an end hopefully with this. So thank you again for your patience. That's probably also why this round is a little bit longer, um, than the last couple. And as Keith has already mentioned, this will be for final consideration for May three. Um, but because of really the process of how you adopted Udo, we've been taking the opportunity to even have this first meeting, sort of a go-through, so everybody can get a sense for what, um, these changes are. So I will try to make it, um, quick. So first, uh, change here, we're just changing a graphic, so we want to include some, um, more information on a, a little updated graphic that includes, um, a different type of flag lot. So if you look closely in the upper left-hand corner, um, in that, uh, lot that is labeled D, that is a different type of a flag lot. So we simply wanted to add that into our graphic. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about flag lots as we go through here. So the second set of changes, um, this is just some updates for how we calculate, um, lot area. Um, and again, this is repeated elsewhere in the document, so we simply wanted to insert it here. We think this is a little bit of a correction, uh, over on the right-hand side. And in the graphics, you see some, um, corrections of how we do, um, front setbacks and measuring lot width. So those red lines would be the corrected, um, graphic on there and the text to go along with that. So a lot of these changes came from our transportation department. And so we'll be seeing a few of those. So this first one here in this traffic section talks about corner visor, vision clearance. Um, and because we have some similar language elsewhere in the ordinance, um, we wanted to just help people out so they could find those. You might remember, we've talked a little bit about that with, uh, building corners and things like that. So, uh, we're just including those, uh, references in this spot here. Fire access roads. So, uh, what you see here is an update and the graphic on the right-hand side is just a, a little bit cleaner version. So you can actually make out that small graphic that we would include in the document. But essentially what this is, um, telling you, um, I think I've been using the example of, think of like the Menards Development where maybe, you know, there's some access road around a building, um, that the minimum width we had listed in there before is twenty-six feet wide. Where really the, the code is, we wanted to update it so it's closer to this graphic, that's right from the fire code. Um, and so there is some allowance where some of those fire access roads could be a little bit narrower and then they have to widen at certain points where there's a fire hydrant. Um, and so really that language in there is to try to update that. So it follows, uh, what the, um, what's in the fire code already. And then you'll see this repeated when we talk about public streets. So we're essentially repeating the same language when we talk about streets a little bit later. Snow melt system. So we don't have anything in the code referring to the snow melt system. So what you see here is adding some text language in there that really says, hey, everybody, we do not want you cutting into the snow melt system. And in addition to that, so then, so then maybe buildings are served, I'll say, through the back. Um, and then we want to be aware that that could cause some issues, um, with development opportunities if, if, um, there is a bunch of easements that, uh, maybe serve, uh, through a back lot. So, uh, we're trying to make sure to give, um, our engineers some language in here that would, they'd be able to say to people, hey, you know, we don't want you doing that. And then, of course, there's language in here that says, if the city engineer is recommending, you know, doing one of these things, that those would be allowed. But we really wanted to have some language in the code, uh, that would give the engineers something to stand on if they wanted, if they needed that. Cause right now, we don't have anything. And then we simply would add the graphic of the actual snow melt system into the document. Um, accessory structures. So we're simply adding hot tubs and saunas to swimming pools, they're similar enough. They're similar enough, and we wanted to add those in where they would be allowed to have a reduced setback. Sorry. So this is the transportation section, so we've got a few things through here in that traffic study requirement, simply referring back to section five where we have sort of a detailed list of what those traffic study requirements are, just referring back to This is in our site design requirement section. We've got some infrastructure improvements on that left-hand column there, really giving, again, the city engineer a little bit more language in there, a little bit more flexibility in there about, rather than just relying on a traffic study, that he would be able to rely on comments from other city departments, as well as maybe the recommendations from the traffic study, but it wouldn't be solely based on what comes out of the traffic study. And then you see some language underneath that talking about scheduling the improvements. So again, trying to create some flexibility. We wouldn't want, maybe we're going to have the developer make an improvement, but if we were going to improve that road that next year, maybe we would want to schedule all of that to be done with our improvement. So again, creating some, a little bit of flexibility. And then adding some language in there about stormwater design requirements. Again, just because it was in that site design requirements, the engineer thought that might be a good spot where we could kind of repeat that. Over on the right-hand column, you see the section talking about the public streets. So again, that's that same language and that same graphic that would allow the street itself to be a little bit narrower than 26 feet, and then have to, have to expand out where there's a hydrant. You see a little bit of, a little note there under the cross-section requirements. Again, maybe flexibility is the key word through this phase. If there was some technical data, some soil data, maybe the engineers would want maybe some more sand or gravel or something through there. So again, creating that little bit of flexibility with that. The next one on the bottom left is just a correction. It's the Ottawa County Road Commission. Sidewalk requirements, really just an update. It's the same requirements for the sidewalk itself, and then the sidewalk cross slope. We think that maybe is a little bit more clear, and then simply spelling out Americans with Disabilities Act. Driveway requirement table, the way the language is in there right now, it gives the city engineer the ability to modify those, but he simply wanted to really put in where those are coming from. So that's that sentence that goes in front. Landscaping, snow storage amenity zone. So this would be in the public street, this would be in the public road right-of-way. Well, right now, we have the language in there that rocks our prohibited. We really, again, wanted some flexibility that would allow the city engineer that, I think the example I've been using is maybe we would want to do, you know, one of these rain gardens or bioswales or something, or maybe some of those include rocks, that we would want to be able to do that in the road right-of-way if approved by the city engineer. Subdivision process table, just some corrections, two some references. And then down at the bottom, under the general subdivision standards, you see where we're circling back to some of those first amendments that we went through, talking about determining property size and measuring lot width. So that's that connection back to that, those first couple of graphics. And then on that right-hand side, just correcting the reference of 1212D5. This next one is really just a correction, that paragraph major street frontage, that sentence should end after residential properties. We think that rest of it was probably just left over from some early versions of Udo. This one is maybe a little bit more lengthy to explain, but on the left-hand side is, I guess what I'm going to refer to as the GMU process table. So this is in chapter 12 of Udo where it tells you, you know, what kind of process you're going to go through for what you may be requesting. I put the table on the right-hand side, which I guess I'm referring to as the HDR table, just because the amendments that we're making on that left-hand side, one of the things we were trying to accomplish is some consistency with how we have this type of information in the rest of the document. And so I wanted to include that stuff on the right-hand side. So the changes on the left, again, kind of getting away from some of the square footage requirements and going back to how we have it elsewhere. So one residential building of one to four units, final determination would be made with the zoning administrator. So you're building a duplex, you just go get your building permit. Towards the bottom, with the more than one residential building of one to four units, that bumps up to the admin review. So that still has to go through all of the site plan process, but it doesn't kick it to the Planning Commission yet. So that's maybe if you were doing a little development of duplexes, it would kick it to the admin review. And then finally, new buildings with five or more dwelling units, that goes to the Planning Commission. So again, that process should sound and look very similar, because that's how we do it elsewhere. So we were trying to really repeat that for some consistency in here. And just to make sure everybody's clear on this, so some of those uses, for instance, one residential building of one to four units, that doesn't mean that it's permitted in all of those zoning districts that you see at the top there. So you still have to go back and look to see where those type of uses. So it's not adding any uses to any of those districts, but if that use is permitted in those districts, here's the process that you would go through. Approving authorities. So in Udo, we have several references to certain staff. City engineer is one, fire marshal is another one that's referred to often. So rather than have some sort of statement about, or his or her designee or something like that, repeated multiple times, we wanted to add this language here that was hopefully going to capture that umbrella so that if that's anywhere in the document, that you would know that it could be also their designee if we didn't have that person here. On that right-hand side, that PUD rezoning and condominium rezoning, simply correcting a reference as well as adding an additional reference to just kick you to where, where you'll find those in the ordinance. Next one in regards to flag lots. So again, the update of the flag lot is, the way it's worded in the document right now, it really says a flag lot is when you have one house behind another. And while that can be true, we're updating this to really refer to the fact that a flag lot is something where you have less than the required amount of frontage out by the road. So you could kind of think of maybe the pie-shaped lots at the end of a cul-de-sac or something that, and that's why we wanted to add that graphic language in the front of this as well. So updating this to make sure that it captures all types of flag lots. And then over on that right-hand side, you really just see putting you on notice that if you do a flag lot or a split that resulted in a couple of homes or a couple of duplexes, that you may be required to do the fire access requirement. So again, kind of like with all of Udo, we're trying to be helpful so you would find these things early in your process. So it doesn't say it shall, it says, you know, that this may come in depending on how you were to do your project. So then updating the flag lot definition, again, to kind of get away from that being just a building behind, a house behind another house, and then adding the lot area definition. Along and within is being changed to along or within. So credit Vince for finding this one, but we think that's more correct with how the rest of the language is written in that section. So South Shore Village. So this is the last set of amendments. So we have adopted this little sub-area plan for South Shore Village, and as a result, we really want to incorporate some of the updates for that to allow for these sorts of things to happen in the South Shore Village District. So a couple of things to point out on this portion of the plan that you see, the yellow buildings are residential, those orange buildings are what could be, and again, these are plans, right? These aren't, you know, saying that this is happening, but this was the plan for South Shore Village. The yellow included some residential uses, that orange is some mixed use. And then the other item to note is the south side of 17th Street, really you see the buildings coming closer to 17th Street. So as a result of approving that plan, this is the South Shore Village zoning district. We, again, we wanted to be able to allow for those things to happen. So what you see, the rest of these amendments are an attempt to, to get there so that somebody could do those very things that we have in that plan. So these next amendments are introducing those residential uses into the South Shore Village. So that's what you see, those boxes being added to those different residential uses. And then the building type table, again, trying to be consistent with how we've treated some of the other, that River Michigan, the East Downtown, so it kind of follows that same pattern, all of those being permitted uses. And then doing the same thing with the frontage type. So then you, you introduce the different kind of residential frontage types for those buildings in those same tables there. There's the frontage type table, again, trying to stay consistent with how we've done some of the other form-based code districts, the North Downtown, East Downtown. And then maybe the biggest change is the setback. So right now, South Shore Village has a minimum of 50 and a maximum setback in the front of 55, so minimum 50, maximum 55. What you see there is an attempt to really, again, allow for what we put in that plan. So on the north side of 17th Street, the minimum would be 20, the maximum would be 30. The 20 would be allowed if they provided a sidewalk easement. That's really important because, as you know, the way that little slip street goes through there, that the public sidewalk really ends up going up by the buildings. And so you would have to give an easement to get as close as 20 feet. We think that this change really puts everybody on the north side, probably with the exception of Jackie's place, into compliance, so they would be conforming. And then on the south side, we're really trying to mimic, I guess what I'm going to call our more normal setbacks in our form-based district, which is a minimum of five and a maximum of 10. So again, that would allow for those things that you saw in that plan, moving those buildings closer to the street. And then you just have some of the updates in the rest of the section that really say the same thing. This is in that graphic for the South Shore Village setbacks. That's Udo eight.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Questions from council members? Nicki, comment? Nikki?
No, I just, I'm amazed. I mean, this is so detailed, and I'm glad you went through it, because you weren't involved in the initial...
No, I got here right after you guys adopted Udo, yeah.
Lucky you.
But I've been working on it ever since.
Well, I'm, I'm happy you are. I mean, this is amazing and detailed work.
It has, it has been a big team effort, I can tell you that, you included.
Any other questions, comments from council members?
I'm just going to reiterate what I said at Planning Commission. Thank you guys for doing this, to echo what Nikki was saying. This is 435 pages, I think, of ordinance. That's an awful lot, and it with, we got it really close to perfect the first time around. I know that eight, eight rounds of changes seems like a lot, but anytime you start using something, you start realizing, you know, where you may have missed something along the way, and it was a multi-year process to do this, and you guys have been really diligent as, as you were going through it tonight, and this is the second time I've heard this presentation, as you're going through it tonight, I thought to myself, a lot of other organizations or entities would go good enough, and because I think we've all used forms and documents before where we look and we go, who made this? This just doesn't seem like it makes sense. And you guys have been really good about making sure that this works and works well, not only for you, but for the public. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Yep. And we're not doing any action on this tonight.
Right.
Yep. We're, our, May 3, this is the first reading. This is our opportunity to be able to see it. Kathy, you're giving me a look like... Not, we're not doing a roll call, are we doing a roll call on first reading?
I think you take action that you're doing first reading.
So this is just, this is not to adopt the ordinance, this is just to accept it for first reading.
It's all you're doing is accepting it for first reading.
All right, great. I just want to be really, really clear on that with, with council and with the public. So I would entertain a motion to accept this, these changes for first reading.
So moved.
Move by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Source, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsour?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 12E 6.1, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gift, Department of Public Safety Services Fire Operations 2023 Safety Symposium, event held April 1, 2023. Ottawa County Fire Chiefs Association, $800. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
That we accept the gifts with the proper gratitude and acknowledgement.
Great. Move by Aaron Source, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things for everyone today. First, next Wednesday, just a reminder, and we are putting this out in our various city communications, we won't have study session. Instead, we will have kind of an open house setting right here in this room from 6 until 8-ish, probably, you know, until people don't want to talk to you anymore maybe, about the upcoming ballot question and on the May 2 ballot about the land sale, kind of the property swap, I think is the, the community kind of understands that to be. And you asked, and I will do my best to make a presentation in the middle of that open house at 7 o'clock. And Tim, I'll try to, you know, cover everything and yet be appropriately concise. So just reminding everybody, and we'll put, we'll put that information out there. Hopefully, I'm not sure, thank you to Mayor and Councilmember Coronado. We spent the better part of the last two days in Lansing. I was actually there on Monday also with the Capitol Conference, which is for Michigan Municipal League, just gathering as a larger group, certainly learning from colleagues across, across the state, but really focusing particularly on legislative items of concern. I don't think any of those would be of surprise to you. The top three items were taking a look at revenue sharing and a particular strategy with the trust fund, with revenue sharing, protecting that as a very key item of funding for local units. Also taking a look at preemption strategies and the like, particularly with short-term rentals being a historic item that we're taking a look at, and playing defense, I guess you could say on that, we talked a lot about that. And the final item, I didn't mean to quiz you either, Mayor Belinda. I think those, I think those were the highlights, right? And we cert, we talked about a lot more, but definitely talking to, to our legislators, and we'll continue that conversation. And then finally, just want to make sure for your information, because this is coming up soon, we're not that far away from Tulip time, are we? With our really exciting plans that we've been keeping you updated on, had a great study session, dialogue, and conversation... session, dialogue and conversation with you, oh, maybe about a month back about the ice rink, and that we're continuing to get that to final construction documents, and definitely doing fundraising plans and those types of things. I think I have your support there, but one of my rules, right, is no surprises. We are working on for tulip time, when we have thousands and thousands and thousands of people visiting our downtown. And in particular, one of the tulip time kind of hubs of activity is right there at kind of the corner, if you would, of Sixth Street and College. It seemed to be wise to perhaps have a sign up there and kind of promote what we expect is coming soon. And that also using and hoping we're putting the final touches on that patronicity is a partnership, it's a crowdfunding platform that we can use, that's pretty slick and effective platform with just scan a QR code type thing. And then also through the state MEDC, they have a matching fund program with that. So our plan is to put up a sign that, you know, talks about, hey, we're building this ice rink, and here's how you can participate if you think it's a great idea. I just wanted to make sure that it was okay with you, that even though you haven't taken that final vote to approve the documents and everything, I didn't sense any lack of commitment from you all, even though you haven't taken that formal vote. So I didn't want to get out in front of you, and all of a sudden you're out there and you say, hey, this sign is up, and it looks like we're building this thing. Is that okay with everyone that we proceed with that? Okay, I figured. And it really takes adv, like, like the discussion, we'll see, but you never, you never know. A lot of, like, literally, thousands of people are coming through the community, and if we can get, you know, $1,005 gifts, it's not a bad thing. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Next is communications from the mayor, and I'm going to piggyback on what you said, Mr. Van Beek. Two days in Lansing, better part of two days in Lansing, but it takes us a couple of days out of our regular schedules, definitely worth it. And for those who don't know what the Capitol Conference is, it's a meeting of local elected officials, city managers, village managers, essentially the people that are running local government and giving us the opportunity to interact, not only with the Michigan Municipal League staff, learn, the city managers can get some continuing education credits for it as well. Those of us who are elected officials can commiserate with other elected officials. We tend to share a lot of the same problems and have a lot of the same challenges. But one thing I always take away from this is that we have an awful lot to be proud of here in the city of Holland. I know you're not going to like it that I say this, but more people come up to me during that conference and say, you are awfully lucky to have Keith Van Beek as your city manager in the city of Holland. He is one of the best. And my response always is, yeah, we know that, and we're going to hang on to him, so get your grubby hands off him. And, and, and that how well this council works together compared to what I hear from some, some other folks. There were great organizations out there throughout the state, but I think that, that we, we do awfully well here at this dais, and that this community supports us, and we support the community in ways that not every community does in the state of Michigan. And a message this morning from the governor is that we, as Michiganders, tend to be a little bit humble and tend not to sing our own praises, and that we ought to really let people know the great things that are going on, and we've got a great city and a great organization and a great council. And I just want to make, put a big exclamation point on that. Every time I go to one of these conferences, I walk away with that feeling. So, and I know the city manager likes us to go there too, because he real, he lets, gets us a chance to see that we got it pretty good here also. I do have two proclamations this evening. If you've been watching the whole meeting, you know that there's, there's one that's been mentioned already, but before I do that, I also have a proclamation in regard to Earth Day. Whereas the global community faces challenges such as environmental degradation, extreme weather events, resource shortages, and global health issues. And whereas the Holland community recognizes the important role that a sound natural environment plays in maintaining a healthy society, strong economy, the natural beauty of the Great Lakes and the state of Michigan. And whereas the comprehensive Holland Community Energy Plan makes our community a national leader in energy security, affordability, sustainability, and efficiency. And whereas our city applauds the local businesses and organizations who seek to protect our environment, including the Holland Board of Public Works, the McIntawa Area Coordinating Council, the Holland Use Advisory Council's Environmental Committee, the Outdoor Discovery Center, Ottawa Food, the West Michigan Environmental Council, and many other partners. And whereas the city's sustainability framework supports curbside recycling, the Project Pride coupon for solid waste recycling, the Home Energy retrofit program, the Urban Tree Canopy, 18 city parks, the promotion of public programs such as Bike to Work Week, Skip the Straw Day, beach cleanup events at Holland State Park. And whereas we recognize the individual contributions of sustainable actions of households throughout the city of Holland who continue to lead with sustainable practices in the home. And whereas this year marks the 53rd anniversary of the Earth Day movement, let it be known that the city of Holland, Michigan encourages all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring and leading with sustainable efforts for future generations of Holland residents. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2023, as Earth Day. We encourage Holland residents to learn about the challenges our planet faces in coming years and work to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and to encourage others to undertake similar actions so that future generations of humanity may enjoy the gift of life on our planet Earth. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Holland this 19th day of April 2023, Mayor Nathan Box. And as mentioned previously in the meeting, I have a second proclamation this evening in regard to Faith Month. Whereas faith is an integral part of American life, and residents of Holland represent faith traditions from every part of the world. And whereas we recognize the founder of Holland, Reverend Albertus Christian Vinnraldi, and the community of Dutch Calvinist separatists came to Holland for a better way of life and to fully express their faith. And whereas the individual freedom to express our faith is a cornerstone of our great nation and protected under the United States Constitution. And whereas the freedom to express our faith has helped create and sustain our city, state, and nation with religious vitality and diversity. And whereas persons of every faith, from every corner of the world, continue to seek better lives and freedom to worship free from persecution here in Holland. And whereas people of faith find hope in their traditions in times of crisis and uncertainty. And whereas as a city, we acknowledge the tradition and strength of each person's faith as we make decisions for today and the future to strengthen and grow our community. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Faith Month. We encourage all people of faith to observe, reaffirm, and celebrate the religious diversity of our great nation, to worship in their own traditions, seeking truth and strength from God to face the problems of today, and give thanks for the access and opportunity to worship, pray, meditate, and practice their faith in their own manner. We invite members of our community to gather as they choose to pray and meditate for our national, state, and local government leaders, and for wisdom to lead Holland on the paths of justice, peace, and goodwill for all people. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Holland this 19th day of April 2023, Mayor Nathan Box. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, communications from council members? Mr. Corbin?
Okay, I've got three things, so be patient. First thing is Councilman Byrd is not present this evening, but he would like me to read a statement to all of you. So regarding Faith Month, thank you for all being part of this. I'm unable to be here tonight because I'm supporting my son on his first baseball game of the year and being the starter pitcher, fun family times. As a Christian, I believe that the faith plays a central in our lives, guiding our actions, and giving us hope and strength in times of difficulty and inconvenience. It is important to celebrate and support faith, not just in ourselves, but for the benefit of our community and our nation as a whole. The city of Holland, Michigan, which was founded by Dutch immigrants in the 19th century, has a rich history of faith and community building. These early settlers were deeply committed to their Christian beliefs and sought to create a society based on the principles of love, justice, and compassion. Similarly, the United States founding fathers, many of whom were also devout Christians, recognized the importance of faith in shaping their vision for the free and just society we live in. They spoke of the need for virtue and morality to be the foundation of our democratic republic, and many of them believed that God had a special role to play in the destiny of our new nation. Supporting faith is not about imposing other beliefs on, imposing our beliefs on others, but to recognize the importance of faith in our lives, both individually and collectively. It is a time to reflect on the ways in which our faith shapes our values and informs our actions. As Christians, we are called to love our neighbors as ourselves and to work for the common good. And Faith Month provides a chance to renew our commitment to these principles. As we celebrate Faith Month, let us honor the legacy of Holland's founding fathers and the United States founding fathers by reaffirming our commitment to the principles of love, justice, and compassion that they had in their hearts with faith. And that's a statement from Mr. Byrd. And secondly, I will be absent for the next two Wednesdays. Unfortunately, the only time we could get flights to go to Florida for a wedding we're in is Wednesday to Wednesday, so I won't be here for two meetings in a row. I think we have two scheduled. And last, I just would ask my colleagues to consider having an agenda item for one of our study sessions regarding the participation in Memorial Day activities and the parade. I would like to just revisit that policy that we've had for years. I know that there are reasons behind it, staff has given us reasons, but the reasons are based on our policy. So I would like to revisit that in a study session, if possible, and have that on a future agenda.
I, I guess I would like a little clarification on what in particular you're talking about, because council members participate in the parade. Is that what you're, you're discussing?
I think there are places where we might be able to even financially support, indirectly support that activity, but again, I want to have those discussions with our council colleagues.
All right. Any other communications for council members? Mr. Vreeman?
Well, do we have a consensus? I mean, because I don't want to walk out of here with no consensus. If we don't have a consensus, I just want that to be so noted.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a problem with having that on the agenda for a discussion?
Doesn't, doesn't appear to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Vreeman?
Well, being a big advocate of tulip time, you can probably guess what I'm going to be talking about, tulip time, and that it's coming. And just a reminder to fellow council members that I think there's an invitation in your mailbacks downstairs for the luncheon that's taking place on Monday, and to be looking at that and let the, there you go, thanks.
Yeah.
To let the staff know if you're able to participate in that. I think it's going to, it's a more consolidated event than it has been in the past, and I think it would be beneficial for you and those other statewide, nationwide leaders that are going to be present at that, to rub shoulders with them and show off our community as well. And I think that's it, just to get tulip time on our radar, because it's coming and the tulips are already blooming in spots that have direct sun.
Wonderful. A burning question, I'm sure, on everybody's mind, is that are the tulips going to be good at tulip time, Mr. Vreeman, since you're the expert?
Right.
Good? That is the right answer. I always say you can ask the mayor that question any day of the year, and the answer will be the same. The tulips will be perfect.
Well, I'll tell you, we've trained 53 tour guides over the last two weeks to give walking tours and bus tours of our community, and they're ready just to sing our praises and to tell the stories of what we've done over decades and decades. So thanks for endorsing it in so many ways.
Great.
Right, that too.
Any other communications from council members? Seeing none. We do have, I'm going to, in a moment, I'll entertain a motion to go into a closed session to review a written legal opinion with the city's attorney. There may be action that follows that meeting. We will go back into regular session. For those who are watching at home, we are going to be, we'll be stopping the broadcast at this point, because we don't know how long that, that closed session may go. And if you don't realize that we actually have somebody who's taking care of all of the electronics equipment in the other room, and we don't want him to have to wait for an indeterminate amount of time to just come back for a couple of minutes at the end of the meeting. But if you want to know what the result of that is, A, it will be in the minutes, and B, if you want to contact City Hall tomorrow morning after about 8:30 to the clerk's office, we will be able to, clerk, clerk will, will be able to happily and joyfully, with, with glee in her heart and caffeine in her veins, be able to give you that information. So with that, I will entertain a motion to enter closed session.
So moved?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support? Support by Vreeman. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're in closed session, but Mr. Corbin has asked for a quick restroom break, so anybody else who wants to do that, we can do that too. So before, before Vince starts his presentation...